I'd like to call the August 5th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First item for our business is invocation by Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberations and grant them knowledge and guidance as they look upon the responsibilities that are before them. Be with those who are on vacation. Let it be a time of replenishment. May they return home refreshed, renewed, and ready to better serve you in the days that lie ahead. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Russell, will you do the pledge for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Licketed officials tonight is Sheriff Miller and I believe Bob Williams from the school board. I haven't missed anybody, I hope. Thank you for coming. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda item for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period on the agenda. Next item would be to approve the adoption of the agenda. A motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item two is approval of the items on the consent agenda. Is there any Board member that would like to have anything removed from the consent agenda moved to the end of the meeting? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Say moved.
Motion, second.
Second.
And a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, item three is public comment. Mr. Cotton, has anyone signed up?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to public hearings. Rezoning case, I think that's Ms. Jessica Rue. Our new planning director too, by the way, she's now our planning director. Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you. The first item coming from the planning department this evening is a traditional rezoning case. This is a request to go from RA, Rural Agricultural, to residential 15. It was submitted by Brian Fleer on behalf of Carl and Sharon Marshburn. It involves three parcels totaling 33.64 acres. Water in the area is provided by Onwassa. There is no sewer available in the area at this point in time. Fire service is provided by Half Moon Fire Department. And on Gum Branch Road, we are nearing capacity in this area, as in most of Gum Branch Road. Our zoning map shows the parcels are currently zoned rural agricultural. It also demonstrates to the southeast here, we have R-15 immediately adjacent. Our aerial view shows there is one single-family residential structure on site. There's a few outbuildings associated with that, and the area's primarily been used for farmland. And we have R-15 zoning on Timothy Lane just south of here. Again, rural agricultural is a 20,000-square-foot lot. The main difference between what is zoned now and the requested zoning in R-15 is that the minimum lot size would be 15,000 square feet. We do consider that to be a medium-density residential district. This is in line with our land use plan, which the land use plan classification has this as rural residential, which does fit with the requesting rezoning. Our comprehensive plan suggests this because in this zoning district, R-15, you cannot have multifamily development, which would kick in that requirement for sewer. So this is a very straightforward rezoning request that is as consistent as you can The planning board discussed this on July 11th at their meeting. They unanimously recommended its approval, and there were no comments from the public at that meeting. That completes my summary of this request.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the public hearing. And first, the applicant is requested to provide a description of the project and provide any additional information to the Board. I'll call on Mr. Brian Fleer.
Chairman Bright, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to represent the Marshburns here this evening. Brian Fleer with Metis Development Services, 228 North Front Street, Wilmington. I have no further additions to the presentation. I'd be glad to take any questions Commissioners might have at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fleer. At this time, no one else has signed up to speak on rezoning case PREZ 2019, tag 0009. I'll make one call to the audience. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will now close the public hearing. The item is available for Commissioner discussion and questions of staff and/or the public.
Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone have any questions for the applicant or staff? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Text amendment on B., Ms. Rue, that's yours again.
This is a text amendment request that is coming to you from our staff. Staff is requesting to amend our zoning ordinance to establish an outdoor event venue as a use in our table of uses and to make that a use-by-special requirement in the highway business zone and a special use, requiring a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment in the RA District. They're also requesting, associated with this, that we establish special events regulations, and we will walk through those here momentarily. This really does three things. The first is it does establish an outdoor event venue. We have a variety of uses for outdoor recreation uses in our zoning ordinance already. What we do not have is a venue that is general and can be used for different events. And this is a request that we're seeing come up more and more. And we have some current uses that are similar, and they're coming to us, and they're wanting to expand and do more things, and we wanted to be sure that we had a way to regulate those uses. And so that's what this is. An outdoor event venue would be an area that its primary use was to hold events, and that could include concerts or festivals, theater exhibitions, and flea market-type uses. But it would also allow us, if similar uses fell into that, to regulate them under the same standards. It also provides some standards for special events commercial. And that would be a for-profit special event that may not be on a plot of land that is used solely for special events. It may occur in a parking lot or on a football field or something of that nature. And this would include for-profit events, like a circus, fair, carnival, and would exclude, this definition would exclude, our nonprofit events and our government entity events. So things like a fall festival at church or the shrimp festival would not fall under this for-profit definition. And lastly, they've asked for some regulations staff has on non-commercial special events. And what we mean by that is something that might be a larger event exceeding 100 persons on residential property. And we see this a lot in houses that are for rent. And we wanted to make sure that we had regulations to guide that use as well. As I pointed out, this divides the outdoor event venues into two different categories. In highway business, it would be subject to special requirements. That means on the application, you could come show staff that you met all these requirements, and you could receive that permit right from our office. In the RA District, it would be a special use. When our TRC discussed this, our Technical Review Committee, the input was we needed to have ways to mitigate impacts to surrounding properties in the RA District, and that's the reason for the difference. And so in addition to what's listed as the special uses here, the Board of Adjustment could potentially add more conditions and more requirements onto that permit specific to the property being discussed. Special events commercial also would have specialized use standards. These were suggested by our Technical Review Committee and are your standard parking notification of the Sheriff's Office, crowd management for large events, solid waste removal, and restroom facilities. And those are very similar to what we discussed on our permanent indoor event centers last time. These are very typical things that we see when you talk about special events. And lastly, the special events non-commercial would limit these residential events to four per year and would require a zoning permit be issued when the event's held by someone other than the owner. And typically, we see this come up when people are having really large reunions, but more frequently, we see beach weddings. And that created the need to have some regulation on this. Because you do see these uses come up in areas where there's primary homeowners around, surrounding a rental property, and we needed to have a way to regulate what these events and how frequently they were occurring, and where the parking was going, and how the trash The planning board discussed this at their meeting on July 11th. They did unanimously recommend this text amendment. There were no public comments received at that meeting.
At this time, I will open the public hearing. No one has signed up for the public hearing. I will make a call to the audience to speak on text amendment case ZTA 2019004. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will now close the public hearing. The item is available for Commissioner discussion and questions of staff. It is respectfully requested the Board of Commissioners adopt the statement of consistency, consider approval of the proposed text amendment, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Motion from the Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, and we hear a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, let me, just a couple of things. So, anybody who has an event in an RA zone after this ordinance is passed, do you have to get a permit for each event?
Well, what we are asking for is if in the RA zone, you are establishing a property to be used primarily for special events, yes, sir, they will need to come and request a special use permit and request that use be granted to them by the Board of Adjustment.
So they get a special use permit, and then it would be perpetual? They could use for multiple events?
Yes, correct. However, I'm certain, there were certain thresholds that would kick in and need for them to notify different people, including our office, when you had those larger events.
Right. And when we make a text amendment change like this, how is the public notified of this text amendment change?
These are advertised twice in the newspaper, on our website, and also advertised prior to going to the planning board. If we are aware that there are individuals this impacts, we do outreach. We have three properties in Onslow County right now that could potentially be impacted by this text amendment, and we have kept those property owners up to date since conception of this text amendment.
So they've had two opportunities to be here and comment on
Yes, sir.
any objections. Okay. Thank you.
Any further? All in favor of a motion to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Text amendment case under C., I think that's yours also.
Pet trick tonight. The next text amendment is also a request by staff. In June, we had a case go to the Board of Adjustment, and the reason the case needed to go to the Board of Adjustment was a permit application was denied. And the reason for the denial was the definition of a front yard. And when you go to look at our definitions, we realized two separate definitions had different ways of determining what that front yard was. And staff looked at all the definitions because of this relating to setbacks and the establishment of yards and decided that we would like to update them for clarity, to provide illustrations, which is common in more modern zoning ordinances, and also make it easy for our staff to apply and defend, quite honestly. Also going on contributing to this text amendment, we've been seeing an increase of requests to put accessory structures forward of a primary structure. A lot of times, this is out of necessity. It's out of, the whole backyard's full of wetlands sometimes, or there's an unusually placed septic tank or a situation like that. And in some cases, people just prefer to have a garage or some other accessory structure forward of their house. And so they asked the planning board to discuss these standards as well. And so what's coming to you this evening is a request from staff to make amendments to modernize all of our definitions regarding yards, lot lines, and setbacks, and also to update the requirements regarding the location of accessory structures. On the screen is the list of definitions that have been updated. We are using the definitions coming from our professionally drafted zoning ordinance that's forthcoming. And so these were definitions that we had prepared and were ready to adopt soon anyways. So they're just coming ahead of time. I'm going to call attention tonight to an accessory structure. An accessory structure is just that. It is something that is subordinate to a primary use. So things that are typically in accessory structure would be a shed or a garage or a carport. That's what we see most commonly, and swimming pools as well fall in there. I'm going to point out and highlight what's changing, but first what isn't. Detached residential accessory structures may not be constructed or placed in the front yard on lots smaller than two acres in size. That will remain the same. That is in effect now. So nothing will change if you're smaller than two acres in size. The planning board had a very robust discussion on the setbacks and the accessory structures and decided that it would be appropriate to allow an exception for carports so long as the carport could meet the underlying setback in that zoning district. As we have always have, we will still offer the ability to request a special use permit to put an accessory structure forward of the home if the lot is on a navigable waterway. And we've always had that in our zoning ordinance. What would be updated would be detached accessory structures could be constructed in the front yard or the side yard on residential lots greater than two acres in size or on a flag lot. Now, the planning board had discussion on offering the exception on everything from one acres, two acres, three acres, four acres, five acres, and 10 acres, and settled on two acres being appropriate for Onslow County. They also, staff had not proposed including a flag lot, and the planning board voted to include the flag lot. So we'll look at a picture of a flag lot in a moment to demonstrate why they thought that was appropriate. For awareness, accessory structures that are under 400 square feet, the setback is typically five feet from the side and rear property line. That gets a little larger if you're on a corner lot. Infrastructure's 400 street or greater, square feet or greater, it's eight feet from the side and rear or 15 when you're on that corner double lot. And this is our flag lot. And the reason the planning board wanted this included was if the house in the picture were to put an accessory structure forward of the home, it's actually in somebody else's backyard. And so they thought this wasn't an appropriate area to include in this text amendment. And this is a good example of what we see a request for typically. Now, this is already built. There's a primary structure in the middle of the screen. And to the left there, you see an accessory structure that would technically be considered forward of the home. This lot meets the two acres, so this would be a conforming accessory structure should we adopt this text amendment this evening, allowing those accessory structures to be placed forward of the primary structure. And I will note that if there are areas that are in a homeowners association govern subdivision, they have bylaws, those things would kick in, and typically, the homeowners association will have more stringent policies on the location of an accessory structure, the size of it, and how many you can have. So we're going to not be focused on those areas, but simply these areas that are not zoned RA. Because in RA, you've always been able to put an accessory structure forward of the primary structure. And in fact, you can also have an accessory structure without a primary use. So we look at RA not as a residential district in that regard. I also want to point out, our ordinance has never regulated and is not proposed to regulate the number of accessory structures on a lot. The planning board did vote unanimously July 11th to recommend approval of the proposed zoning text amendment based upon the consistency with comprehensive plan.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing. No one has signed up. I will make a call to the audience. If anyone would like to speak on text amendment case ZTA 2019, tag 00005, please approach the podium. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will now close the public hearing. The item is available for Commissioner discussion and questions of staff. It is respectfully requested the Board of Commissioners adopt the statement of consistency, consider approval of the proposed text amendment, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a question.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Ms. Rue, I just got a quick question. I didn't see any wording in the changes whatsoever about decks. Are decks considered accessory structures?
Decks are not considered an accessory.
No matter how large the deck is?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff?
Just to be clear, we were detached accessory structures. So although by building code, sometimes a deck may be considered an accessory structure or a separate structure. For our purposes tonight, we were discussing detached accessory structures.
I like this. Think this is necessary. Thank you.
I do too. I think it's a good move to adjust some of our work-in-progress ordinances that cover a lot of people that has these large lots. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Section D., Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. And I apologize upfront, this is very scripted, and it has to be, so I appreciate the Boards and the audience's indulgence as I read this, basically verbatim. Proposed installment financing agreement for three projects in 2019 using limited obligation bonds. This public hearing for the purpose of considering whether the Board of Commissioners for the county should approve a proposed installment financing agreement and certain related documents pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-20 as amended for the purpose of providing funds in an amount not to exceed $51 million with other available funds for the construction and other accomplishments of the project herein described. The county would secure the repayment by it of money's advance pursuant to such proposed agreement by granting a security interest in a portion of the project and certain related properties. The projects being considered funding for tonight are the animal shelter, the West Central Elementary, and New Southern Elementary. Following the public hearing, the Board of Commissioners may ask questions of those involved with this issue. Before opening the public hearing, I will briefly describe. The public hearing was published in the Jacksonville Daily News not less than 10 days before the date of this public hearing. This is the hour, date, and place fixed for the public hearing for the purpose of considering (a) whether the Board of Commissioners for the County of Onslow should approve a proposed installment financing agreement and certain related documents pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-TAC 20 as amended for the purpose of providing funds in an amount not to exceed $51 million with other available funds for the construction and other accomplishment of the project hereinafter described. And (b) whether in connection with such proposed agreement, the county should acquire from the Onslow County Board of Education an interest in the real and personal property included in project herein described, including specifically the site of New Southern Elementary School and the improvements thereon for the use by the Onslow County Schools. The county would secure the repayment by it of money's advance pursuant to such proposed agreement by granting a security interest in a portion of the project and certain related property. The project consists of (a) expanding, renovating, constructing, equipping, and improving the Onslow County Animal Shelter; (b) acquiring, constructing, equipping, and improving an elementary school to be known as West Central Elementary; and (c) acquiring, constructing, equipping, and improving an elementary school to be known as New Southern Elementary. At this time, I will now open the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak on the proposed installment financing for these three projects using limited obligation bonds. I will make one call to the audience. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will now close the podium. Let's see. All right. The Board of Commissioners would immediately hear anyone who might wish to be heard on such a matter. Madam Clerk, has the clerk's office received any written statements from the members of the public concerning this matter?
The clerk's office has not received any written statements.
Thank you. (end of transcript) Thank you. With input from the public received, the public hearing is now closed, and this item is available for Commissioner consideration. The possible motions to proceed with A) the proposed installment financing to fund a portion of the cost of the projects, and B) the acquisition from the Board of Education of an interest in real and personal property included in the project, including specifically the site of New Southern Elementary and the improvements thereon for use by Onslow County Schools. I will now turn it over to ask the chairman to conduct the vote.
Motion approved.
All heard the motion that Mr. Cotton, the possible motion that he read. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
A motion and a second. I will now ask for discussion, questions? Any questions from the board? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, unanimous vote, Mr. Cotton. Next item is Item 5, Surplus Land. I think that's Ms. Laura Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The county did receive four new offers on some property, surplus real property. And the first one is parcel 020036. It's located at 9 Windsor Drive, and it's about .28 of an acre. The offer was in the amount of $1,550.52. The second parcel is 025620, located at 2 Knox Drive, and it is .17 of an acre. And that offer was also the same amount, $1,550.52. The third parcel is 025619, located at 4 Knox Drive. It's .19 of an acre, and the offer was in the amount of $1,546.23. And the last offer was for parcel 006902 at 19 Elkhona Street. It's .22 of an acre, and the amount of the offer was $1,462.37. It's respectfully requested that the board declare the properties as surplus and consider the initial offers, and if approved, authorize the purchasing director to conduct the sale. Use the negotiated offer advertisement upset bid process.
Do you hear a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Preliminary reports for annual and prior year's settlement order collection of our tax collector-director, Mr. Harry Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. And thank you for the opportunity to present this item for your consideration this evening. The item before you actually has four related topics that we need to discuss and for you to consider. Each year following the close of the fiscal year, North Carolina General Statute 105-373 requires that the tax collector provide an annual settlement to the Board of Commissioners. As the first part of this process, the collector is to provide to the board a preliminary report which contains a list of all real property owners who still have unpaid taxes for the current year, which we're talking about the 2018 tax year, as well as a list of property owners with unpaid taxes on their personal property. Also part of that report, the collector is to provide a sworn statement certifying that diligent efforts have been made to collect the outstanding balance of taxes due. For the fiscal year which just ended on June 30th, 2019, the list of unpaid taxes on real property for 2018 contained 1,302 names with taxes in the amount of $534,998.45. The list of unpaid taxes for personal property for 2018 contained 4,571 names with a tax amount of $302,588.97. I would like to mention that due to the diligent efforts of our collection staff in conjunction with the support of county administration and the Board of Commissioners, we achieved the highest collection percentage for the fiscal year end for 2018-19 in Onslow County record at 99.08%. The second part or topic that we need to consider tonight is the annual settlement of current year taxes, which is for 2018, which includes the total balance due for 2018 in the amount of $837,577.42. And that is basically the sum of the real and personal that were included in the preliminary report. The third topic is the annual settlement for prior year's taxes, which were routinely charged back to the tax collector to continue pursuing those. And at the end of 2018-19 fiscal year, the balance on those was $3,684,535.38. The fourth part or topic that we need to consider is found in North Carolina General Statute 105-321, which stipulates that the Board of Commissioners approve an order of collection authorizing and empowering the tax collector to utilize all available statutory remedies in collecting delinquent taxes. The order of the collection has the force and effect of a judgment and execution against the taxpayer's real and personal property. The order includes the 2019 taxes as well that will come due on September 1st this year, as well as the 2018 and the prior year taxes that were referenced in the settlement. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the preliminary report and the sworn statement included therein, and approve the settlement of current year taxes per North Carolina General Statute 105-373A3, and approve the settlement of taxes for prior years per North Carolina General Statute 105-373B. It is also requested that the board approve the order of collection and authorize the chairman to sign the order of collection pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 105-321.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion. I would like to say thank you to the tax office and the Board of Commissioners for their support in the collection process that we went through to order to get to the 99.08 collection rate. I don't recall that we've ever had that big of a percentage of collection before. Maybe we have, but...
No, it's the first time reaching the 99% threshold.
So...
Great job.
So, that has worked out well for us, and I think we'll continue with that. Any further comments or questions?
3.6 million represents these properties that we continue to try to address through actions such as we've taken tonight, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Any further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Landfill minimum fees, Ms. Melissa Moore. Good evening.
Good evening. Chairman Wright, Vice Chairman Bennett, Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton. It is my pleasure to come to you this evening presenting the solid waste department's request to update our fee schedule. Onslow County Landfill operates a scale system to determine the weight of waste being deposited by citizens and businesses. The county utilizes a fee-based system to operate the solid waste department as an enterprise fund. There are inherent expenditures associated with operating the landfill. It is incumbent upon the county to establish a fee structure which captures sufficient revenues to cover the costs associated with operating the solid waste department without being over burdensome to the community. During the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget process, a minimum fee of $3 was proposed and approved by the board. The minimum fee was set after determining the cost of providing and operating the landfill, as well as considering the current fees for two bags of household trash at a convenient site. However, in implementing this minimum charge, inconsistencies have been noted that relate to the actual minimum weight of less than 20 pounds, which registers on the scale. In order to establish equity as it pertains to the fee structure, staff is proposing the fee structure be amended as follows. Abolish the existing minimum fee of $3 for all waste streams. Establish a municipal solid waste fee of 49 cent. Establish a land clearing and inert debris minimum fee of 27 cent. Establish a special handling minimum fee of 60 cent. And implement an effective date of all minimum fees of August 15th, 2019. I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
The intent of this original $3 minimum fee was to address the problem of, or the situation where people were coming through with like one or two bags of trash, and it wasn't registering on the scale, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Yeah, so that was our understanding, or that was my understanding. And so, the problem that we want to address is that with a $3 minimum fee, I can't collect enough trash in two weeks to gather it, to make it come up to $3. And so, you don't want people lay it with a bunch of trash laying around their house, and with a bunch of garbage cans, you know, attracting pest and things like that. And so, this was the rationale behind this, is to have a, to actually, that if it doesn't measure 20 pounds, that there's a minimum fee for that, the 27 cent, correct?
Well, 27 cent for yard debris? Yes, sir, that would be correct. If you're actually putting your household trash, that would be a minimum 49 cent.
Right. So, that was the issue?
Yes, sir.
Seems to me like we'd have some, there's got to be some fixed cost. You have to have somebody there every time somebody drives across the scale to weigh something and to collect the fees. I mean, I'm all about reducing fees when we can, but I'm concerned that does, you know, 49 cents actually pay the fixed costs that we have for somebody bringing a truck into the landfill and getting weighed and charged and getting back out? I'm not sure how you can measure that, but I guess you guys, I mean, I guess you guys have looked at this, and you think that you can cover your costs with this kind of fee schedule.
We are continuing to analyze the financial situation of the landfill and address this situation as needed.
Any further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Contract amendment with Mayesville Fire and EMS, Mr. Bryson.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. What you have before you this evening is a contract amendment with Mayesville Fire EMS Incorporated. In 2018, Mayesville Fire and EMS merged with Belgrade and Loco Volunteer Fire Departments. To help provide fire protection in these areas, this merger, with this merger, they had to enter in a contract agreement with Onslow County. The contract agreement is, that we have before you this evening is an extension for one year of service with Mayesville Fire and EMS to cover the entire area to include Belgrade and Loco. For the 2019-20 fiscal year, the amount is for $200,000, which of $195,000 is to cover operational funds, and $5,000 is to cover a yearly audit. We're respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider a contract amendment with Mayesville Fire and EMS Incorporated, and if approved, authorize the chairman to sign the contract amendment.
Motion?
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Norm, what were we paying Loco and Belgrade before? I mean, under the contract?
Collectively, we're about $180,000 is what we had in last year for those two together. With this, we actually go through a line item budget with the Fire Rescue Commission to actually go through their cost and expenditures. Some of the things that Mayesville is looking at to in the future is to expand to even include a BLS volunteer EMS service in that area. Currently, if you're needing an ambulance in that location, you have to get one coming from basically Jacksonville or Swansboro. So, they're looking to expand their services in the near future with us, which would also require us to update some of the contracts. But some of this is looking forward to ahead with them in covering those expenditures.
Was that 180,000, did that include $5,000 for the audit?
That included the audit as well, sir.
Any further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Norm, next one, debris removal.
Yes, sir. This item is for the contract for primary debris removal, hauling, and disposal contract. After Hurricane Florence, Onslow County spent $9 million in the debris management, hauling, and disposal of all the debris that we saw throughout that entire event. After that event, county decided that we needed to rebid the contract for primary, secondary hauling and disposal, and for debris management. The item tonight for your consideration is the contract for primary debris removal, hauling, and disposal only. The county sent out a request for proposal on RFP for the bids for the contracts, and received four proposals. These proposals were evaluated on 12 different criteria to include experience, use of local subcontractors, financial stability, and pricing for services. After reviewing the proposal, staff has recommended that the primary contractor for debris removal, hauling, and disposal be awarded to Seres Environmental. The contract is a prepositioned contract that does not have a specific dollar amount, and there is no payment upon if the contract is not activated by the county.
And just as a side note for everyone, we went through the pricing on this. Seres was about $132,727 cheaper than the other bidders in this contract. So, we respectfully requesting that the Board of County Commissioners consider approval of the contract with Seres Environmental, and authorize the chairman to sign the contract on behalf of the county.
Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? This replaces, or this take the place of Crowder Golf?
This one, for the primary, will replace Crowder Golf. We're still evaluating the secondary contractor, and in the future, we will come before you all with the secondary contractor, as well as the management contract.
Norm, does the administration determine how long they're on site after disaster, or is that spelled out in the contract?
That's going to be one thing that's going to come upon our determination. One of the things that we learned out of Hurricane Florence, because we've never done debris removal before, Onslow County government. Some of the things that we've discussed, and we've already made changes in how we do our mapping to where they will start, and how they will pick up the debris. We're also looking at putting time, more constrictive timeframes on when they'll pick it up and how much. With these contracts, we can actually define the timeline, and they have to bring in additional resources to help meet that timeline.
Any further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Mr. David Groovdahl. Human forklift.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Onslow County EMS utilizes Stryker Power Load as part of our stretcher system for the ambulances. The Power Load is a unique mechanical lifting system that picks up the stretcher and elevates it so the EMT or the paramedic need only push the stretcher in or out of the ambulance. The Power Load system prevents lifting injuries for our providers when moving patients in and out of the ambulance. It has respectfully requested that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners consider the sole source purchase of the Stryker Power Load system from Stryker Sales Corporation, as authorized under North Carolina General Statute 143-129EG, and authorize the chairman to execute the documents on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Section G, School Resource Officer, SRO agreement. Sheriff Miller.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Cotton, Mr. DeSelmus. And what happened about a year and a half ago, members of the school administration, Onslow County School Administration, came to my office and revealed that a grant was asked for and received, a state grant, to increase the amount of school resource officers in the elementary schools. This is a new program. This was in the aftermath of school violence that we have seen in other parts of the county. So, we took it very seriously. We had a very good discussion with the school administration, and we essentially told them that we are willing to sign on to the grant and to provide those school resource officers that we are willing to sign on to the grant and to provide those school resource officers to the school system for the protection of our children. We also realized that the grant was not enough to provide one officer per the 14 schools that are in the county. And so, we crunched the numbers and we found out that at least we can provide one school resource officers to two schools. We all agreed on this process and then obviously, you know, we would formulate a policy where the officers would go for what reason, but it would be still additional officers to protect our children. So, for public, the Board of Education is offering to pay in full salaries and benefits for seven new school resource officers, SROs. Additionally, the Board of Education will pay an additional $20,000 to be used for portable radios for the seven new SROs. Two of those radios are gonna be taken from Sheriff's Office budget. So those are for five radios. The Sheriff's Office will use existing equipment as we, we are able to, to be used by the SROs and will purchase their uniforms from the current fiscal year budget. This would include fully equipped patrol car, handheld radios, car radios, firearm, uniform, taser, body armor, and also a laptop for them to be able to perform their duties. The SROs starting salary will be 58,000. This includes federal taxes, retirement benefits, total amount will be paid by the Board of Education, 406,028.91. 14 schools, seven SROs, because that is the limit that the grant will allow us to do. So we are working with the school administration to provide what we can, obviously the hiring process, the selection process, the training process, the equipping, equipping, and also the policy to make sure that it is consistent with what is needed to keep our children safe. Having said all that, we don't control the amount of funds. That will be between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners and that's why I'm here to answer any questions for the Board of Commissioners that you may have.
Thank you Sheriff. Before we move further with this, one of the school board members, Mr. Williams, has been here tonight and he said that the school board had not approved the contract yet, but I would now like to refer to legal to see if it's okay for us to move forward with the contract because the school board hadn't approved it yet, is that something?
Yes, sir, I spoke to Dr. Collins shortly before this meeting and he's assured us that going forward tonight would be proper. Normally, of course, we would wait to the requesting agency funds and approves the contract, but Dr. Collins, I don't wanna speak for him, but has indicated that, correct me if I say anything wrong, but has indicated that it was budgeted and that this contract, they're asking for it to be considered tonight by the Board of Commissioners and they're fully prepared to go forward with it.
If it's approved, if it's approved tonight, it has to be approved in the language that it is and then any changes, if it's changed over, that would require them to come back for another board meeting, but it would be okay for us to move forward with voting on it tonight?
Yes, sir, and just so the boards are aware, before tonight's meeting, Mr. Irwin, the school board attorney and I went back and forth on some language and that's, so you have the product of the school board attorney and myself. Of course, I've already gotten approval from Sheriff Miller, we talked about the terms and made sure everything was satisfactory to him. So that would be a conversation Mr. Irwin would have had with his administration prior to tonight's consideration.
Okay. Okay. Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I got a question about one of the, the language in here in reference to the salaries. It says, the Sheriff's Office uses existing equipment, I get that, and then it says, "We'll purchase uniforms from the current FY budget." This would include a fully equipped patrol car, handheld, et cetera. Is that one patrol car or is that seven patrol cars?
Oh, no, sir, not at all. Every school resource officer requires a police vehicle, a cruiser, we call it, a patrol car, but also because it's not, it's not a high mileage vehicle, it basically is put in front of the school as a deterrent to let people know that this school is protected by an SRO. So what we have done in consultation, we have decided instead of turning high mileage vehicles in, to keep those high mileage vehicles and then issue them out to the new SROs. So one SRO, one vehicle, and with all the equipment that is attached, yes, sir.
Well, if, if the officer's covering two schools, he's gonna have to have a vehicle to get from one school to the other anyway.
That's exactly right, yes, sir.
Can't be one, can't be one vehicle.
That's exactly right. And also, in case law enforcement action is done, there needs to be a transportation to the magistrate's office or maybe to juvenile services. So a vehicle per SRO is appropriate.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand this in my head. So what you're saying is that there will be seven vehicles or just one?
No, there will be, every SRO will have a vehicle.
So that means there's seven vehicles that will be purchased?
Yes, sir.
Not purchased?
Or included, is it purchased or?
No, those are actually taken for our current inventory. So there is no monetary that the Board of Commissioners would have to.
It just confused me with the language, it said be one patrol car, I'm like, wow, one for seven, that doesn't make any sense.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have, I have two questions. What is the starting salary, not with all the particulars knocked in, what is the starting salary for this officer?
It's in the high 30s and, but that doesn't include the benefits.
I'm not worried about that, I just wanna know what it's 30 some thousand dollars and then everything else with the benefits that are added in?
Yes, sir, your federal taxes, 5% 401K match, that is required by the state, so that is included in the overall amount.
My second question is, and this is a loaded question, how safe are these vehicles? I'm concerned with something that's got 100,000 plus on it, how safe is a vehicle for my officer to go from point A to point B? Is it gonna be safe enough Sheriff? I don't want our officers injured, 'cause some of these cars are.
Absolutely, we're on the same side, Mr. Commissioner, because if a vehicle is unsafe, and we actually had that issue, we had to turn the vehicles in, but every vehicle will be inspected to make sure that it's safe, not only for the SRO, but also for the people that he, he or she may have to transport. So yes, any unsafe vehicle will be turned in.
Thank you.
I got another question, I just want some clarification, I know what you said about the vote and I'm good with what you said as far as, because I'm not a lawyer and I understand, but I've got board members out here right now, so the board is, is on top of this, you approved this particular language, correct?
Are you referring to the board?
Bob, I mean, you guys haven't voted on it yet, so I just wanted to get the reassurance that this is, this is what you guys agreed to.
I guess, I guess what he's saying is if your board doesn't vote for it, that, do we put some language in here that comes back? Is that what you're asking, Robin?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Bob Williams, Board of Education. If you approve the contract tonight, it will go to the Board of Education, I presume, at our next meeting. And under the scenario that you oppose, that if we didn't approve it as written, if we amended the contract, it would have to come back to you. My experience is that it will, it's already gone through our attorney, it's already gone through our administration. Our administration will brief us on what the contract details and then we will take a vote on it, but I would expect that it would be passing in our board.
Mr. Chairman, I got a few comments as well. Providing security for our public schools obviously is one of the most important issues we can consider. My daughter is currently an elementary teacher in Onslow County Schools, so it's an issue of great concern to me. The question is, is which steps will be most effective in creating a secure school environment? The current LEOs and retired LEOs I've spoken with recommend hardening the facility to deny access to a potential threat. So the next question is, Commissioner Price, has that been done? I don't know, I don't know if it's been done. I haven't been informed of that. I requested a security briefing from Onslow County Schools when I first found out about the SRO grant in April of 2019, I believe it was. I consider it part of my job to look into seeing if it has been done. Superintendent told me that this information couldn't be shared in an open setting, which I fully understand. I understand that and I requested a private briefing. When I didn't hear anything from Onslow County Schools, I contacted our county manager, Mr. Cotton, to relay my concerns and request for a briefing with Onslow County Schools. I have yet to receive the security brief. It's, Ms. Julie Wan turned in my name to the White House to make a visit to the White House and I was approved in 24 hours, but Onslow County Schools can't provide me a briefing in a four month period of time. I am not on any terror watch list, I'm, I mean, that I'm aware of, they wouldn't approve me to go to the White House if I was. So my ability to make a decision would be based on assumptions then, some of which may be inaccurate. I drive by schools all the time and I see what I used to call huts, they call them temporary classrooms, where they're temporary classrooms in the back. And whenever I had one of those, it was just, you got your own key, you turn your key, you open the door, you control your own AC, you control everything because you're isolated, you're not in that continuous building. And so, from my point of view, those folks may be vulnerable in that type of setting. As I drive by other schools across the county, I notice that a number of our schools are not continuous, one continuous building. They have pods of maybe five or six classrooms in each pod. And are those doors keypad or key swiped? I don't know. That was my point of requesting a security brief. So, you know, I'm acting in the dark by making a decision, you know, on an extremely important issue. Obviously, stationing seven SROs in 14 elementary schools does not provide as much security as one might think. It does create an illusion of security for the public. But an illusion is not enough. I mean, whenever you, the first principle I've always heard, and then again, I'm not an LEO, but I have spoken to some of our retired LEOs on the air, Commissioner Dab and Commissioner Bright, and they agreed that denying access was the first step. So, you know, it does create an illusion of security for the public, however, I don't believe it should be our first step. Without all the requisite information about security upgrades on Onslow County Schools, it would be irresponsible of me to vote in support of the grant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further?
Mr. Chairman, I, I happen to spend my day there most days. And I don't know that we need to get into a debate of which is gonna be the best, whether it's hardening or putting officers there, I put that in the hands of the Board of Education. If we're gonna be honest with ourselves, we can't afford to do what anybody would like to do. You know, New River Air Station with its unlimited federal dollars can't stop a boat coming up the New River without putting somebody on it. When we look at these campuses, we can harden parts of it, we may not be able to harden parts of it. That does need to be something that comes about in the future as we move forward. But when somebody gets on that campus regardless of which direction they come from, how they get through it, or how they enter it, I think it's important to know, or for parents to know, and anybody else out there to know, that when the call is made, somebody's close, whether they're at that campus at that moment or not, or if they're 30 seconds across the road, because we know how much, how important time is. This is the beginning. I'm pretty sure that Onslow County Schools are taking steps in both directions, I don't think you can have one without the other, I think they go hand in hand. You gotta have a hardened structure or a hardened campus, you gotta have somebody there to respond. You have someone there to respond, you need to have some steps in place that's building tough places to get into. But at the end of the day, when I call for help, I want a badge and a gun and a uniform showing up. And tonight, I'm gonna vote in favor of it because it's twofold. It's not only for protection, it's not only for people to see that car in front of that building or see officers moving back and forth, but it's also a heck of an opportunity to build rapport with the law enforcement community and a five-year-old, and the first day they meet each other is a positive thing, not a negative thing, because we already got enough issues in this nation with the disrespect of law enforcement, and this is a good opportunity to start building some positive rapport with law enforcement. We don't get that in the beginning, a lot of times the kid's first chance to meet law enforcement is seeing their mother or father removed from the home or, or pulled out of the car and arrested for whatever offense. So I think there's several opportunities here with this, and the Board of Education has jumped on it, done a good job of, of saying, "We're gonna spend this money." And I think it's Article 10, it says, "Good faith between the board and the Sheriff's Office." Well, I'm gonna present you some good faith from me as a county commissioner. I got faith in the Board of Education, the Sheriff's Office and what they're doing, so tonight I'll vote in favor of it.
Mr. Chair, one of the things that, this is another tool in your arsenal, this is another tool that you're gonna use to protect our children. This is a stepping stone, it's gonna get us started, I think we're gonna get better things in the future, but we gotta basically crawl before we can walk, and that's where we're going, and I support this. Thank you, Chair.
I, I agree with what the Commissioner that spoke already has said. The hardened structure, I think, in, in my line of business when I was in public safety, you gotta start somewhere, and since SROs are funded, it's not costing the county anything, then we would have to look at the next step. And I think the school, and the new schools has done some hardened structure or some hardened cases, especially in the new school design, I know that for a fact. So I think, I would like to see both, I'd like to see SROs and hardened structures. So we try to get as much as we can for, for what we got available to us, and this is what we have available to us tonight is the SROs.
Board of Commissioners, I have a comment. I agree with what the Commissioner said about, this is not the end-all to solve all problems. There's physical security, it is providing the good building of, limit the ingress of schools. Instead of having a large campus where people can get in and out without being detected, how about we have physical security? Then there's also electronic security. Electronic security is to see a threat and then to be able to adequately respond to that threat. And then there is also procedural security. When people come to the school, what do they do? They have to check in at the office, but there has to be a channelization of those people, where there's only one way in and one way out. And then obviously, there's the security that the SROs provide. We are committed to working with the school system to provide and to provide any assistance or any expertise that we can bring in for all those areas of security. The SRO is only one part of it, but physical security, electronic security, procedural security, and teamwork with the schools to keep our, our children safe, that's very important.
Let me, let me just say this, I agree with, with Commissioner Price and I agree with Commissioner Buchanan, but what I'm concerned about, and I think this is the right positive step, it's, it's kinda like the detox center. Okay, we're taking the first step and then we're gonna expand later hopefully for some longer-term treatment, this is the way I view this too. And I respect your, I respect your, your wisdom and, and stuff about hardening the structure, but we have funding available to do this, to have an SRO, to have seven SROs, and I agree, it's a start. It's definitely a start and we can talk about hardening structures later. My only concern with this is that I just wanna make sure, because to me, this is out of whack that the BOE did not vote on this prior to this coming here, and I'm taking it, taking the attorney's word that it, it's okay. And I've talked to Bob, who sits on the Board of Education, so I'm hoping that the Board of Education will approve this without any amendments and it'll be passed forward as set forth here. So that's the only, that's the only concern that I have, and I've gotten reassurance that that's what's gonna happen. that that's what's gonna happen. But again, not to negate what you said, I firmly believe in hardening structure, but this is a start. The presence of police officers in a school is a big deterrent. It's not the answer, you know, to fix everything, but it's at least a start, and that's what my concern is right now. So if we got the funding, the BOE's on board with it, then I trust we can move forward with that.
Any further? We have a motion and a second. A motion is to approve the grant pending the school board's approval. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
We have one opposition. Is that what I got? Okay. So it'll be six to one. Thank you, gentlemen. Appointments, Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First this evening is the Nursing and Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. The North Carolina General Assembly enacted a comprehensive bill of rights, which established the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for each county that has a nursing home within its political boundaries. The members are all volunteer advocates, and they are appointed by the county commissioners, and they oversee the work and have a, the working, the inner workings of each nursing home, and they have a firsthand, I don't know why I'm losing this. Anyway, they were able to say firsthand the conditions of the nursing homes and able to be a advocate for the residents and the patients at these nursing homes. So the three appointments for your consideration this evening, and they are all Commissioner category, is Ms. Linda Smith, Ms. Catherine Brandon, and Ms. Yvonne Robinson. Ms. Smith and Ms. Brandon have terms expiring August 14th of 2021, and Ms. Robinson would be August 14th of 2022. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It's respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the reappointment of the listed individuals and specified terms.
A motion to approve the three citizens?
So moved.
A motion? Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Onslow Planning Board, Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two categories this evening. The first is the White Oak Township, and the other is the Environmental Representative. Ms. Miki White currently represents the White Oak Township, and she does not wish to be reappointed. Ms. Melissa Keps is the Environmental Representative. Mr. Brennan Williams has expressed an interest and willingness to serve in the White Oak Township category and has provided a citizen participation application as well as Ms. Keps. All applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It's respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the appointment of Ms. Melissa Keps for the Environmental Representative and Mr. Brennan Williams for the White Oak Township Representative, both for three-year terms expiring July 31st of 2022.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Consent agenda, there was no items on the consent agenda. We'll move on to item eight, public comment.
No one has signed up for the second public comment.
No one signed up. Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Cotton and see what you can tell us about.
I have no comments this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
No comments from the manager.
I just wanna go home.
We'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Buchanan?
I don't have any comments. Thank you, everybody be in here and have a safe trip home.
Okay, Mr. Tim Foster?
Congratulations to Ms. Rue. I had the opportunity to visit the planning department today and the environmental department today, and hats off to them with their courtesy and hard work of informing me of what I needed to do to put a shed larger accessory building, I think's what we referred to it earlier, a little larger than 12 by 12, and that was great help on their part. So if anyone out there is listening and they have some questions with planning and permitting, the folks that work in the county do a great job of answering those questions and walking you through those things. So my hat's off to the folks in the planning and environmental, and congratulations, Ms. Rue.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Knapp?
I just wanna say, congrats again to our deputy county, or deputy, or our assistant county manager for what she's done, Ms. Sherry Slater. I know you've heard me bark up and down about it, but the detox center is up and running. We had a great donation for clothing, and I'm super proud of the effort. It's a reality after three years, and it's here. And again, it's a start. It's a start for something bigger and better. So again, thank you, Sherry, very much for all your hard work. Ms. Rue, it was very nice to meet you. I think you're gonna fill in just perfectly. I like the brevity, really quick, to the point, and I do appreciate that. And again, I just wanna say that, you know, you hear some various opinions up here from the Commissioners, and I think that's what makes it unique. Like Commissioner Price, I respect his opinion very much so, and sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree. And so, but we all work together to, for a common cause, and I do appreciate your input and your knowledge, so I just wanted to let you know that. And the last thing I'll say, it's good to be back in the United States. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Price?
Just had one congratulations wanna send out to Milton Chandler. Played outside linebacker for Jacksonville High School, and he represented them and Onslow County in the East West All-Star Game in Greensboro, and had a number of tackles, was in mixing it up. He was in on it. Also to Isaac Anderson, played defensive end and tight end, representing Southwest High School in Onslow County in the East West All-Star Game as well. He had a blocked field goal, he had a sack, he had a number of quarterback pressures. Both of these guys, both of these gentlemen did a great job in representing Onslow County up in Greensboro in the East West game. So congratulations to them and their families, and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Shanahan?
I'd just like to remind everyone that National Night Out is tomorrow evening. It's a great community event, and so I should certainly consider coming out for that, and otherwise, thank you for being here and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna welcome Ms. Rue also, looking forward to working with you in planning and development. And again, thank Mr. Harry Smith for collecting 99.08% of our property taxes, and I wanna thank everybody who volunteers to serve on our citizen boards, who were appointed tonight, and others. We couldn't do it without the citizen input from our boards, and I hope you have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, we had a workshop, county commissioner workshop, where we decided on nonprofit money and tourism money, and we had a great meeting, and we were able to wring out a lot of tough, had a lot of tough decisions, the ones of us that were there. So I thank the board for participating in that.
That was directed at me.
Oh, you weren't there?
I was on an airplane, I'm sorry.
I didn't miss you.
The only other thing I wanna say is my thoughts and prayers go out to the people from Dayton, Ohio, and El Paso, Texas. I got a late report this afternoon that now we have 21 that died as a result at El Paso, city of 20. And of course, we had nine, and goes back to what Commissioner Knapp was saying about how important the crisis center is. You gotta know that somebody that commits an act like this is something terrible, it might be temporary, but there's something temporarily mentally wrong with them for him or her to go out and kill their own sister in one of these attacks in Dayton, Ohio case. So my thoughts and prayers are out with the members that died and their family and their loved ones, and we need to pray for the ones that's still in the hospital recovering from all the trauma that was directed there. Other than that?
Chairman, just one thing that I wanna say, because the sheriff and I had a long conversation this evening, and we're doing a lot of active shooter training all across this county. The city is, the county is, and we just got done doing an active shooter drill at the college. We're training, 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 and the sheriff and the chief and everybody, we're trying to be prepared. We can't stop everything, but we're gonna be best trained there is in this county, so I wanna share with that.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate that. Yeah, it's good to know that we have those things in place, and we address active trainer shooting. So it just becomes an old hand when you get in a situation, you just react from your training, you don't think about it, you just react from your training. That's been my experience in it. But anyway, I hope you folks have a good evening. Thank you for coming. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We got adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.